Planning Commission regular meeting agenda for Wednesday, November 6, 2024. We're meeting in City Hall. The Path Planning Commission meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are live streamed at https://www.youtube.com/user/CityOfTaft. Public comment can be made in person and can be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off at the Dropbox in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to the cityclerk@cityoftaft.org. They may be made by phone to the city clerk's office at 661-763-1222. And any comments received will be read into the record. Okay. We are doing our pledge of allegiance and invocation. I'm going to go ahead and lead the pledge and then we'll have the invocation. Do you all get stand?
Ready? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My glasses are not working today. We're going to have Pastor Bella Black as our giving our invocation. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for the faithful servants you've brought together to fulfill your purpose for the City of Taft. You have given us willing hearts and desires to proclaim the name of Jesus through word and deed. I speak your wisdom, patience, and guidance over this planning commission as they seek your will, and we ask it all in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Hello, Ron. Okay.
Welcome.
You're looking well.
Okay. We are now going to be moving on to roll call as soon as our team is back up here together. Okay?
Chairman Livingston.
Here.
Vice Chair Shirts, absent. Commissioner Dowden.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Orin.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. As that we have no special public comments for the planning meeting, we will skip item one and move to the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting from October 2, 2024. Do I have a?
All motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Orin.
Absent. Absent.
Commissioner Dowden.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Chairman Livingston.
Yes. Okay. That passes on a 3-0 with one abstention and one absence. Next up, Planning Commission review of zoning amendment sections regarding emergency shelters, low-barrier navigation centers, transitional housing, and supportive housing. And we will turn this over to our Director, Mark Staples.
Thank you, Chairman Livingston. As we did at our last meeting tonight, we're going to look at the next couple of sections that are outlined in our upcoming Housing Element Update as programs, housing programs. And they're not quite necessarily direct to construction of housing, but more to do with our zoning code and things we need to change and get up to par with state law, state definitions, and the like. So this evening, as you mentioned, we are looking at four different topics, if you will, emergency shelters, low-barrier navigation centers, transitional housing, and supportive housing. And I think for Chairman Livingston and Commissioner Orin, you may recall, a number of years ago, we got most of this up to speed with the definition and the differences between them all. The one unique thing, if you look at the draft resolution that is provided to show the initial proposed edits with emergency shelter, supportive housing, target population, because that's a term that's used throughout all these types of housing, transitional-type housing developments or housing options. The code section changed because these have been kind of grouped together and they're all in this 655-0 through 655-89, something like that in the government code. They've been given their own sections, still part of, but a little more detached and given its own discussion section away from other parts of the housing element, state law. So just to define each of these for the public that may be watching, emergency shelters are housing with minimal supportive services for homeless persons, and it's limited to a six-month period. And that is a running 180-day clock. Our Alpha House here is an example of that where it's, most people think of homeless people as what was presented at City Council last night of these unsheltered persons that may be sitting out on the street and all that. But it involves everybody else as well, included battered women that are in a tough situation in their life and they need to get out of the home that they're in. They are deemed homeless and they have these type of emergency shelters to help them transition and get to their next stage of their life after that six-month period. The next housing item is low-barrier navigation center. You could almost call this what people might call a homeless center previously. But the key part is the low-barrier part, which is, I think some of you may have had conversations with folks where some of the problems with some of the homeless housing centers is that they had a lot of rules before you could even get in. So you've got to give up a pet or animal or other items that have been your possessions for so long. And the states wanted to encourage more of these low-barrier navigation centers that allows these people to come in with what they have on their back, have in their hands, and if there is an animal with them type of thing. So the definition goes into both what the center involves and then expands onto it where low barrier means the best practices to reduce those barriers to entry, so the presence of partners, so having a significant other in some way, pets, storage of possessions, and then also privacy if it's needed for that person. Because a lot of times, these are dormitory settings for these housing options for low-barrier navigation centers. Supportive housing has no limit on the length of stay that is occupied by the target population. I'll go over that in a second. But it is directly linked to on- or off-site services that assist those residents in retaining housing, improving their health status, and maximizing their ability to live and possible work in the community, so job programs and the like. So the target population, which is a term used over and over within each of these categories and even throughout the housing element portion of the law, is persons with low income, having one or more disabilities, mental illness, HIV or AIDS, substance abuse, other chronic health conditions, and also individuals eligible for services provided under the Lanterman Development Disability Services Act, and may include a number of persons that are listed there in the target population, which includes young and elderly people in different situations. And then the last item we're going over tonight is the transitional housing. These are similar to emergency housing, but they are between six months and 24 months in their stay typically, and they provide services as well. So, and they are tied to other one-on-one services for job placement and cleaning themselves up, things like that. Section two of the draft resolution on page three gets into the land use tables in the next couple of sections for both the residential section, commercial, and the agricultural zone districts, because they have all the housing allowances that a, one of these four different housing types fit within. We've added low-barrier navigation center to all those because that's the new identified housing type. I have listed those in the R2 and R3 zones, because the definition talks about multifamily zones are ideal locations for the low-barrier navigation centers. And, but supportive transition emergency housing needs to be permitted wherever housing is permitted. But since we're wanting to ensure that standards are in place and the services are in place for these, we do have, or we're utilizing the new director's permit process that we developed out of the downtown specific plan to have an administrative process to check that these are in place before they do commence utilizing the facility. So it won't come to the five of you or the City Council to approve. The state wants these more administrative reviews and approvals to get these facilities open when they're requested. So that's why you're seeing the DP director's permit, both in Table 4A, which is the residential land use table, Table 5A, which is the commercial section of the zoning code under mixed use because it allows the residential uses. So you see low-barrier navigation center and then supportive and transitional housing under the director's permit. Then Table 7A, which is out of the agricultural zone, since they allow residential uses. You'll see some of those in place there. And you see some of the revisions from the prior recommendation for the employee housing and how it's all going to look once the agricultural zone is updated and we've gone through our review process. And the one thing I'm still going to work on, page five of the resolution, when it comes to parking, the, if you want to dig into it, but the state law, for whatever reason, got really vague on parking where it just says, what I provided there, I scratched out all the parking requirements related to however many beds are provided and things like that. But the state law does say parking at each facility shall provide sufficient parking to accommodate the maximum number of staff expected to be working in the emergency shelter. So it's not a ratio of size, bedrooms, or anything like that. So that's going to be more of a one-on-one conversation I would have for a potential facility opening up and understanding their operations and figuring out what the parking is or needed, need is for that facility. So, and then at the bottom of page five, we have development standards for the low-barrier navigation centers. This is pulled directly from the government code sections you see referenced throughout the different standards. And then section seven, we had no supportive housing standards prior, but our consultant that's helping with the housing element identified the new section that was created and enhanced for supportive housing. So you see the standards there listed on page six. And on to page seven, comes straight out of the government code, but it's a little more illegible than they typically write their code. So that's the extent of the updates and revisions. And this covers, I think I kind of blew right past it, but this covers programs 5C, 5D, 5E, and 5F that were identified in the list of programs in the draft Housing Element Update that our consultant was able to dig through and figure out consistency with state law regarding these housing types that are somewhat similar to each other. They're actually somewhat consecutive in sections in the government code as well. So this is just the draft at this time. I'm open to any questions or comments you may have, and I can bring back at a later date when we bring this for review and formal approval. I'm wanting to get the housing element formally adopted, then I'll be bringing these back to knock them out kind of one at a time, bring it back in the same package as I've presented them initially last month and this month, and probably do it again in December before we get into the new year. And that concludes my presentation, and I'll take any questions and comments you have.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah. Any pushback from the state? How are your compliance issues, anything there?
No. I was gonna, we haven't had our response yet from the state. Their 90-day review finishes the first week of December. So hopefully we hear back from them on that. But their initial review that we did back in June didn't really bring anything up other than that kind of vague parking standard. It was referred to our consultant, and then we went to the section, and it just says the max number of employees you'll have at any one time kind of standard, instead of being ratios like we do, you know, one per 300 square feet, one per bedroom, half per bedroom, some ratio that's reflective of the size of the facility.
Right.
It's more about the employees. So when they go through an administrative review through my office, that's something they'll have to outline, kind of summarize the operation, proposed operations that they're going to do there, employees, how many people they're planning to house, things like that. And we'll have to determine from that how many spaces they would provide on their property. Because the facility we do have there here for the emergency shelter does have spaces. If you've driven by it, you've seen it. They have four or five spaces off the alley. So I'm figuring most other homes around here have that similar alley access if it's going to be in the central part of the city. If there's a need for another facility of one of these types, hopefully that would be the available parking area for those employees.
I guess I'm being a little facetious, but it's nice to see the state sometimes has common sense. You'd overpark the heck out of any of these things if you actually had to follow parking regulations.
Yeah.
So that's, that's good.
Where is the shelter now, here?
The Alpha House that provides for the generally, speaking of battered women or whatever situations going on in their home.
Seventh and North Street.
Yeah. Are these just typical, or are they typically houses or hotels?
Typically, they're houses. The other cities I've worked in, a lot of folks do, I think probably they just, because they're working with adults that are in whatever emotional distress and various forms. And, you know, they try to max out at like six to seven adults in the home. Once you start getting over that number, you're getting into a more commercial facility. Could still be in a home, but then it, something like that would come before you because it gets into the conditional use permit review process, because you are also even probably exceeding the one person per bedroom type of standard that I think the state would expect, or no more than a pair-up in each bedroom. So other cities I've worked in, a number of folks try to set some form of this up for, you know, even like a hospice at the home that they're setting up for seniors or, you know, what people used to always refer to as a halfway house for drug addiction folks or people who are transitioning out of being incarcerated or things like that. Haven't had a lot of questions on it here, and I don't believe anybody's just operating the facility as far as I know. So, but I've had a lot of questions in other places where people want to operate a home like that.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So if somebody had a house in, for example, Buena Vista Mobile Home Park, and they wanted to take two of their three bedrooms and use it for that type of facility, would there be any constraints on them doing that?
No. A mobile home is considered a residence like any other zone. Most people would just expect it in a residential neighborhood type of setup. Now, I would believe the operator of such a park could restrict it, but on the governmental side of us reviewing it, no, they would apply like anybody else wanted to apply on Leucard or, yeah, 10th. It's any, any home. And the ones where it's geared more towards the multifamily areas of the town where R2 zones and R3 zones, where there might be a duplex. But even if there's a single family there, if it's in the appropriate zone, it would be allowed per the table.
My expectation would be you would have more opposition, given the close nature of those type of facilities. So it might be more likely to be complaints from the neighbors.
Would they have to be notified that that type of?
No. No, but that doesn't help either.
I think the larger facilities, if they reach a certain occupancy, if you will, and they're trying to get whatever approval from the state, because they get our local approval, and then they need to get whatever they need to get through the state or county, forget the process on that side. But they may cap them on how many they can have.
It's getting the state building inspector to approve a mobile home for any modification.
They may have that additional hoop to jump through.
In the state of California, we have two inspectors for the state.
Yeah.
One is in Riverside and one is in Willow, maybe, just north of San Francisco or Sacramento. So you have to make an appointment with them, and they have to approve what you're doing. In addition to that, the Mobile Home Park would have to approve what you are doing because it isn't intended to be a multifamily home within a multifamily development. So there's some special constraints. My question is, have we had anyone approach us to inquire whether or not they have the concept of providing one of these to our community?
No, that's one thing that's been unique to here compared to other cities I've worked in where I've had near zero requests for this. This is all, every city going through this housing element process has had some form of.
Preemptive preparedness.
Yeah. It's kind of like, if you recall, eight years ago, when they had us get emergency transition supportive listed, because we did not have it listed before. Now this is going back and doing those updates, the right reference to the government code, things like that. But specific to Taft, we've had few to no requests comparatively to almost every other city I worked in. It felt like I had half a dozen a year where people were, it's their small business, their wanted to operate is to get into, maybe they were former nurses or whatever their reasoning was to have a senior facility, drug rehab place, whatever it may be they would ask.
A for-profit developer finds this kind of development unwieldy and unprofitable. And we can identify that because of what they've done in Los Angeles and other communities. When a one-bedroom home costs you $640,000 to build because of the restrictions and regulations and this rigmarole, and then the people that occupy it have no means of income, so we then are expected to take care of the mortgage for whomever developed this.
Right.
And that's the real rub. I mean, we've just had a whole bunch of election talk about how we need to address this problem. And all it is, is talk because the solution is perhaps less government telling us what has to be done. This, this whole thing that we are required to do is very, very costly.
Well, in Alpha House, it's very temporary. It's supposed to be three days to two weeks. And I know that sometimes they go beyond that. So parking, and they do have quite a bit of parking, so that really wouldn't be, to me, parking wouldn't be much of an issue there. But when you talk about putting it in a neighborhood, because when you're looking at the low-barrier navigation centers, I mean, that looks like, you know, for people with disabilities, but it's not. It goes along with the state's Housing First Plan, which is, a lot of that is focused towards people who are homeless and on the streets that need to get off of the streets. And there is funding, particularly in Bakersfield. I haven't seen it in Taft. It has nothing to do with whether the person is drug addict. I mean, just to be real about it, because it's housing first, because the philosophy of the state is if you get somebody who has challenges like that into housing, it removes a lot of the stress in their lives and they're able to get help. I don't think there's any requirements on that to get help. But when you think about, when you think about that type of housing coming into neighborhoods, there could be really huge issues, and parking being one of them if it's not, if it's not specifically addressed. So that's my.
Yeah, we're talking up to six adults in a house. Each could be driving.
Well, at least the staff is. Yeah. The likelihood is that they won't be having too many people who are clients who are also driving a lot of these places. By the time they've gotten to that, they've pretty much blown through everything else they own, and they basically own what they carry with them, most. There are some who still have cars, things like that. And the transition depends on what type. We didn't find, yes, when I was in San Diego, we hardly found a lot of complaints about housing that dealt with abused women, things of that nature. That was almost always relatively acceptable to the neighbors. But boy, the minute they hear the word drugs, people are up in arms all the time.
We, I visited several of those SRO-type properties in San Diego proper and in the county. And it brings with it a parcel of other social services that should be provided. And if they are not, you've really condemned the neighborhood.
Right.
But if you do support it properly, people's lives can get changed. And I met a family, I remember from, this family from over 20 years ago. And they were a true success story. They were, all of those things that were negative, and they were turning into regular, upright citizens, looking to the future for, a future for their family. And, you know, that's what we want to provide. But the extraneous services that are required to come into that, it's tough to put that in any neighborhood without having those people then identified and singled out. You know, because there's a stigma that goes with that, that behavior too. So, I mean, this is a huge social issue. It isn't being handled through housing only, but I wonder where the interaction from the social side of this is.
That can be a problem. I think one of the issues, I've seen some studies on Housing First, and one of the biggest issues can tend to be the failure of the government to follow through on its side of the bargain, which is to be providing the social workers, providing certain services that are essential in order to have that person be able to have a chance to make it out. If they, if it falls out, what you end up then with is an eviction process, which is not fun either.
Well, of late, I've had a lot of time to sit and think. And it is a problem, and there is a solution, but it takes concerted effort. And rather than being of the mindset that the government needs to handle this, my mind says that we, the community, need to handle it ourselves because we can be much more efficient than the government. We, I mean, we all know that.
And keep in mind that there's also the nonprofits that provide a number of the services as well. So it's not quite a take-a-village to help folks that are needing this help. It's hopefully that we have sufficient capacity with whoever the service provider might be that helps with, you know, prolonged housing options and getting back to work and things like that, that different services beyond the county services or state-provided services that can fill in those gaps to help that person move forward.
Correct. Any other questions or observations?
And I'll look deeper into the services side of each of these housing types. And when we come back to a final resolution to act on early next year, hopefully I'll have.
Might include that.
Questions answered for you. Yeah.
Okay. So if not, we'll move on to our next item. My glasses back on, which is the Planning Director's Report.
Thank you, Chairman Livingston. The two things I'll mention is hopefully we are on schedule for getting those comments back from HCD. They had 90 days from about Labor Day. So it'll be sometime after Thanksgiving we hear back, but we did hear back Monday from them just for a technical submittal for the list of sites that were in our document. They wanted a more simplified Excel spreadsheet of it, so we got that to them. So the fact that they've reached out prior to the end of that 90 days is a positive sign.
It means they've actually been reviewing it.
Yeah. Or they're giving themselves their final 30-day warning, if you will, to get the review to us, what technical corrections are needed, or further analysis to explain all the tables and charts we provided in that document and how it's going to turn into things the city can improve to encourage the various housing types to be developed here as needed. So that was good to hear from them. And then just a reminder, on Monday, that's Veterans Day. We do have our yearly event at the Veterans Park right next door here to City Hall. It will be. Event at the Veterans Park right next door here to City Hall, it will be Monday this year, the day of, instead of a Friday, Saturday or Sunday. Um, it's gonna look a little different, I believe the mayor is not gonna be available, so, uh, Mr. Bryant will be. More of the emcee and I think even um, uh, Randy Miller's not available, so we'll have somebody else to help with uh the um. Uh, proceedings, the Legion Hall will have their uh folks there.
Good.
And the veterans that will be um acknowledged at that event, um, so. And I think they're aiming to have more of a breakfast than a lunch after, so those who like to attend that event yearly. Show up earlier to um get breakfast, cause it's for everybody, vets first, but it's for everybody.
I I don't know how it might be coinc- when it will coincide with it, um, I know that the uh. Um, West Side Museum.
Oh.
The wa- the oil museum has been working on a project, they've been collecting photographs of. Anybody who's served, not just passed away or anything like that, just anybody who's served and they're. Doing a gallery of those up at the uh oil museum, so we need to call there to find out when it's gonna open, cause I don't remember off the top of my head. But um my mom has been working on it and we're talking, you know, some pretty good sized photographs of all sorts of of people, um. That they're uh wanting to honor, so I'm sure it's planned around the eleventh as well, but.
And then uh one side note is, last year, if you were able to catch it, the Legion was able to. Organize their own little mini car show and small parade for the veteran, local veterans, that won't be happening this year, they weren't able to. Quite get the logistics together, but we'll work with them again to uh make it happen in future years, but this year it will just be the event on Monday. Here at the park next to City Hall.
Great.
And that's all I have.
Oh, in that case, we'll move on to our city attorney, any statements, sir?
Thank you, no statements this evening.
Okay, uh, any commissioner comments? We'll start down at your end.
Alright, so the Cub Scouts are supposed to join you that that day?
Yes.
Yeah, they're so, they're asked to, asked to come by just to hang out, uniformed and uh say hi and make a presence, um, that's about out, that's all.
Just happy that we're past the election and ready to move forward.
Uh, sir, have any comments?
There's a Christmas parade coming up, that's all I know, and that's.
Is that right? Monday of the month?
I think it's not this year.
This year is uh, it's on uh December ninth, which is the second Monday.
Okay, too close to.
Thanksgiving.
Yeah, yeah, okay, um. My only comment is, as you all know, I uh. Work out, work at the uh election central each uh election we have in town. We had somewhere between eight hundred and nine hundred actual people in voting. Maybe a couple hundred more who were dropping off their ballots, um. Kind of a spontaneous reaction, there were a lot of first time voters, especially a lot of the younger uh folks. Uh, you know, one dad walked in, his two girls and was trying to show them around and how to get registered and all that, because they were doing it last minute. Um, registration and uh. At some point, someone in the in the uh group started a ra- ra- a cheer, so. We had these cheers all day long for people coming in and having their first time putting a ballot into the ballot box, and I thought it was. Very typical small town and um something that looked like it was fun and embarrassing, because you know, most. Young teens don't really wanna be.
Outside.
Singled out. Um, but beyond that, it was uh, it's one of those days where they kinda run along and you. Free up, pretty soon figure out that the stipend comes out to about two dollars and fifty cents an hour or something like that, cause you've been there so long. Um, but we had a good time and the other thing that's fascinating to me is. We have an interesting electorate, if you will, most people were insisting that I look at their driver's license. And uh, and it made them feel better if I looked at it, so I looked at every driver's license practically that came through, uh. I think that uh that's probably true in other small towns, but having lived in a big city for a long time, I kinda like the. Extra that goes around the election day here, uh, and that's all I have to say, uh.
Good job.
Thank you, uh, and I suppose we're gonna have another election sometime uh after the first of the year. So that'll be the fifth, I think, in less than a year, fourth or fifth in less than a year.
Is it the Vince Bond one?
Yeah, uh, we couldn't convince enough people that Vince didn't wanna be voted and, and Mr. Weir did. So yes, uh, and by the way, there is actually, just as a side note, there are no rules against serving both. Positions and it's happened in California before, where somebody is both a congressman and an assemblyman.
He could actually do both.
Yeah, probably not as much today as the guy that did it before, cause he did it in the eighteen hundreds.
Right, let's, let's, yeah, I'll repeat that one.
Um, so, let's move on then to uh that last all important uh identification of representative to the city council.
Why don't you do it this time?
I'd like to second that.
Okay, well.
I'll third that.
Yeah, I kinda figured as much, then that's what I'll do, I'll be here to do the uh presentation to the council of our minutes. And with that, we just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Yeah, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, passes.
Deal.
Thanks, guys.
Good job. Nailed it.